Seven o'clock, raise your eyes for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, on the God, in the physical, in the spiritual.
Okay. Any corrections to the minutes? There are none, I have a motion to accept.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any motions to accept the financial report and payment of the bills?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. No budget amendments, Steve?
No, no. I've got two pro forma motions. One's for the National Public Lands Day, September 28th, 2013. Whereas the National Public Lands Day co-sponsored the National Environmental Educational Foundation, the Bureau of Land Management, the Bureau of Department of Defense, the Environmental Protection Agency, the National Park Service, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fishing and Wildlife Service, and the USDA Forest Service has become an annual anticipated event for the local participation in publicly held lands. And whereas the American system of public lands includes parks, unique landscapes, forests, wildlife refuge, historical trails, natural streams, and wetlands, and natural centers, gardens, and other landmarks areas throughout the nation, and individually and collectively represent irreplaceable national resources. And whereas the public lands promote civic ideas that include shared stewardship and recognition of public ownership. And whereas the recreational opportunities offered by public lands help families lead a more active lifestyle and reduce the incidence of childhood obesity. And whereas the land conservative efforts improve its access to public lands by urban residents and work to break down the barriers that prevent Americans from actively utilizing their public lands. And whereas the alliance between private citizens, land managers, and community leaders improve the condition of public-held lands for the greater enjoyment and enrichment of all Americans. Now therefore, I Joseph Alphasona, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2013, as the 20th anniversary of the National Public Lands Day. And encourage all the residents of Elton and the surrounding area to make time on September 28th, 2013, to recognize this special observance. And witness there, we have unto set our hands and seal this 18th day of September.
Mayor Alphasona, Commissioner Hicks, Commissioner Finer, Commissioner Jabowski, and Commissioner Gibbons. I have a motion to accept the proclamation.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And the eleventh is Colonial Heritage Month on October 23rd, 2013. Whereas September, since October 1890, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution has been dedicated to the historical preservation, education, and patriotism. And whereas one of the goals of the society is to promote the tremendous heritage upon which principles of our nations are based on. And whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution will celebrate October 12th, 2013, as Founder's Day, which commemorates the founding of this distinguished society. Whereas as part of Founder's Day celebration, the Daughters of American Revolution recognizes the month of October as Colonial Heritage Month, encouraging all Americans to reflect upon the courage sellers who arrived in America and established the foundation upon which our great country was built on. And whereas the true meaning of the Colonial Heritage Month is to remind us of our privilege to live in a free country, obey its laws, and respect our flag defending against all enemies. And now for I Joseph Alphasona, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2013, as Colonial Heritage Month. And encourage residents in Elton to make time during October 23rd, 2013, to celebrate our collective American heritage. And witness there, we have unto set our hands and seal this 18th day of September, 2013.
Mayor Alphasona, Commissioner Hicks, Commissioner Finer, Commissioner Jabowski, and Commissioner Gibbons. I have a motion to accept.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Senator Trent? Ken?
Evening, Mayor.
Hey.
Councilman.
Good evening.
I'd like to give you an update, status on the water and wastewater treatment systems for the town, town systems. We had a real good month in July. I'll just tell you some of the numbers. BOD, we averaged 3.8. Tails suspended solids, we averaged 1.8 going out of the plant. The total nitrogen was 2.5 milligrams per liter. And the total phosphorus going out was 0.08 milligrams per liter, which is exceptional numbers. We didn't have too much going on. A couple things did. We had two inspections. We had one inspection with MDE for the dryer system, our solid handling at the wastewater treatment plant, and it went very well. And we had another inspection last week, MDE of the water treatment plant, surface water treatment plant. And it also went well. And we had an opportunity to discuss the flooding issue that, you know, is reoccurring pretty much all the time over there. And at the water, right there, the big old creek overflowing the banks. And so we were able to discuss, you know, getting the, underneath the bridge dredged out. And they were very receptive to that. So they left me with thinking that they're going to do something about it or at least get us permits to clean out underneath that bridge or have the state highway do it or whoever. But we're going to get the permits to remove the debris and remove, dredge the, get the sandbar out of, you know, the creek there that's blocking the bridge from flowing. Because, you know, when I told you at the last meeting, you know, the concern about every time we have a rain event, it, you know, I don't have to tell you about the flooding issues, but, you know, the encroachment on the water plant is pretty serious. And I think that maybe, you know, it's sort of perked up about that.
I'm going to have more teeth than you getting something done than what we've been trying to do.
Well, I don't think it's me, but I just think the fact that it's encroaching on the town, the water plant, you know, that's, that's a whole different level, you know, more seriousness. Once the park flooding out is bad enough, but possible water plant flooding, that's something else. So anyway, we are, I'm going to give you an update on that. The, a couple other things. You know, we're working with Trumo on a discharge permit for them. They're bringing in some additional processes. And we went out there and inspected them with, we had MDE. We went out with part of the pre-treatment program and met with the Truma representatives and looked at the processes. And we're getting ready to develop a draft permit for the town to approve or, you know, disapprove or whatever. So we should get that to you probably within the month. Just a quick update. I know you, the mayor and council are aware of the work going on at the pumping stations, Patriots Glen and Water Road and the Meadows. And that work's moving along very smoothly. I'm very impressed with the work. The Meadows, the majority of the work is, I mean, excuse me, Water Road, most of that work has been completed. We did startup of the new pumps and control system about two weeks ago now. And everything's going real smoothly. At Patriots Glen, the new VFDs and control system there has been installed. And it's, that is also working well. And right now, the contractor's working at the Meadows. So that should be the last major improvement there. So that's working out too. So we've had numerous meetings with the town, working on upcoming dredging project and some other, other projects coming up with the towns, the 279, the Belmont Tower painting, and that type of thing. There's some big projects coming up that seem to be, I think, we're ready for. And things are moving on pretty good. I brought along, just, this is a little bit off the side here. Right, we, you know, we're going to have our third annual Elton Alliance Golf Tournament coming up on October the 18th. I already told the mayor and council that a couple months ago. But we sent out about, around about 350 invites to organizations already for, get participation in this fundraiser. So I also brought the mayor and council their own package so that there are applications in here for golfers. So if you, if you know any golfers or whatever, you can sign them up. So I'm going to give this to you. And I brought one for Louis.
I don't know many golfers up here, I don't know. Anybody that works like golf?
It's ball field hockey. Thanks, sir. Handicap.
So, I not only hope you got participate, but you might bring like a foursome or something like that, so.
Get some people signed up. So that's about all I have for tonight.
I do have one question. I know Mr. Gibbons had brought to our attention. I understand that you're doing the work on Delaware Avenue. And I know Luke George has been out too. A piece of property that, behind, let's see, which road is it? I'm trying to think of the street it took us to. Where does the buildup of, of all the wood and stuff blocking the friendship?
150 Friendship Road.
Does that have anything to do with affecting that, that water stream that's causing the block up, the backup? You know what I'm talking about, the piece of property that?
I'm not very sure what you mean, Commissioner.
He's probably not familiar with the case of my winter village. So large accumulation of debris up there, but wouldn't have an impact on the water plant?
At the flow of the?
upstream would have an impact.
I'm talking about the flow. If they're cleaning one end of it. I understand that it's probably a cost of the town, but it's just that, that's something that you might want to take a look at if you're clearing, to try to clear the debris that's coming down that way. Something else is blocking it upstream. So that's what I'm just asking you to take a look at. And Mr. Gibbons, or even Louis can give you the address.
Okay.
I just want you to take a look at him, you know, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you may have some recommendations for us.
Yeah.
Well, right now, I'd be happy if we could clean underneath the bridge. Because, you know, every time we have an event and the state highway, they come out and they clean the debris. That's like a long side of the bridge, but they don't clean the debris from underneath the bridge. And then on the discharge side of the bridge, there's, it's all, there's a sandbar which has probably, I'd say, 40% of the bridge blocked. So really, somebody needs to go in there and they need to dredge that sandbar away. And then they need to get underneath the bridge and remove all that debris. Because when we were looking, when I was looking at it just the other day with the, the state, the whole center, I mean, in the very center of the bridge, there was no flow going underneath that at all. It was going around on the, on the one side, not the park side, but on the, on the water plant side. Water was going underneath the bridge, but in the very center, there was, it was jammed up, there wasn't any flow. And so if we have a rain event, it's just nowhere for it to get underneath the bridge, so.
So who did you have down at the state?
What's that?
Who'd you have at the state level?
Chris Karski was there. He was our inspector for water treatment plant, Maryland Department of the Environment.
Because we are having a meeting with the state officials some month for next month, I believe, on, on the condition of the bridge and seeing what we can do about it, you know?
That's great. Well, you know, right now, I know if they just dredged underneath it, that would be, that would make a world, world of difference.
Just stay on, Ken.
Yeah, try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Louis.
Okay, the first item I have is the Elton Chamber of Commerce request for alcohol waiver. The Elton Alliance is having their Ball Fest this weekend, and they're asking for waiver for Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the following day, Saturday, 21st, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Correctly. Would recommend that the board authorize a waiver for alcohol for the Elton Alliance for this festivity.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept? Grant a waiver of the alcohol beverages for the Ball Fest?
So move.
A second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Louis.
Point of information. What do you mean by the waiver?
It's going to be the same as we've had in the past year with the cups. They could go out to the street. So if they purchase from you, they could go out to the street for the music and.
So, yes, in other words, the drink on the street, you're going to have to buy a cup from the Alliance?
Yes.
So, yes, in other words, the drink on the street, you're going to have to buy a cup from the Alliance?
Yes.
How many people, how many alcohol, how many people are going to be selling alcohol on the street?
Two. You mean one.
I know I'm one, who's the other?
We are going to be doing some bottle.
Who's me?
The Alliance has a permit.
Where?
Up at the other end.
You're going to be selling alcohol on the street as an alliance, correct?
Yes.
So that means you're competing against a businessman in downtown Elton, correct?
Well, actually, because.
Not correct, or not correct, actually. Are you competing against a taxpayer in downtown Elton? No answer?
I would just say we are offering something that you don't offer, I believe, in your establishment.
What do you offer that I do not offer?
I'm sorry?
What do you offer that I do not offer?
It's, we're working with someone right now that, and I would love to come talk to you tomorrow, Mr. Nickerson.
Let's do it now. Don't, what are you dawdling for? I'm just asking for information. What's wrong with you? You're the mayor, what's wrong?
All right, just keep it orderly, that's all.
All I'm asking is questions, and all I want is answers. I pay taxes, I have a liquor license downtown Elton. Now, no one else does, that's open. Since I'm successful and still business since 1990, I found it. All of a sudden now, you're going to do what to me? You want me out of business? I'll be glad to close, so you can have the whole town to yourselves. But I want to know the answer. Who is selling and where, why, and when? You can't answer me, can you?
Yes, I can, but I wish to do that as an Elton Alliance employee and come to see you on your schedule.
I don't want to see you, I'm a taxpayer in downtown Elton. This is an open meeting, I want an answer in front of all the people.
Let's see. Norman? Are you allowed? Can you divulge the person or not at this time? If you can't, if she can't divulge the person at this time, then no. Right? Okay. So she's can't, apparently she just can't divulge that outright now due to the circumstance of the, of the person that's selling. So that's why she should prefer to come talk to you.
Wait a minute, now, wait a minute. You're giving a waiver, and you're not telling me who the waiver is. You're competing against the only taxpayer in downtown Elton that's paying his dues. Now, I want to know who is going to compete against the only taxpayer that has an alcohol license in downtown Elton that's active.
The waiver is for the Alliance.
The waiver is for people to be on the street with the cups. That's what the waiver for is.
You said there's going to be two, certainly.
No, we went through the Liquor Board, the Cecil County Liquor Board, the Alliance did. So that wasn't through the town. The town's giving a waiver to consume on the street.
I asked, how many people are going to be selling alcohol? You said two.
Correct.
Okay, who's the other besides me? I know one.
The Alliance has a license, Jim. The Alliance has a special license.
Yeah, but the Alliance got, are they going to sell it or are they going to someone else?
But they have other ones that got a special license.
That's a norm. Let's go play games.
I'm not playing games.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, who's going to be there working dispensing the alcohol besides me?
I don't know.
Ken divulged it, right?
Who?
I don't know, I want to know.
I don't know.
I think it's a taxpayer, we should know.
I really, I would love to come and talk to you about it tomorrow.
They're not going to talk to me at my place because I'm not a member. And not only that, but hip people talk with four tongues. Okay, never mind. I, I finished talking.
All right. All right, Louis.
The, the first item I have on my agenda is the Elton zoning ordinance. That incorporates the Elton zoning map also.
All right, let me just, just a few minutes. It's been brought to the board's attention that there's been an error on the draft zoning map, partial, or map 320, partial 2390. Eight acres plus or minus. It should be listed as R3, the rest remains C2.
Which one is that?
Map 320. Partial 2390. Should have been listed as R3, the rest remains 32. Mistake there on the map. I'll just let you know.
You have good time for us to look at that, Joe, because we're going to be voting on that. And that number don't mean anything right now.
Right.
Can you repeat that again?
It's actually partial 2390, right?
Number eight.
Partial 2390.
On the second page there.
That's 755, was it, Blasky?
Right, 755, question Blasky.
Okay. And what was the error?
13 and 14.
Should be listed as R3. The rest remains R, R C2.
It is R3.
It is.
May I ask, interrupt?
Please.
Could you look up on your zoning map? The colors coordinated to the zoning. Mr. Snyder noticed that particular parcel was previously approved for eight acres more or less to be changed to R3. If you, if you go to that map, you'll see the shading of that map indicates the entire place is C2.
Okay.
So eight acres more or less, there should be a little section.
Okay, the map is correct.
The map's wrong, right, the map's wrong. It's just the map.
It's just the map, not the.
The color in the map is showing, it's all, all one color, it's yellow.
All right, sir.
Okay. All right, Louis.
Okay, the ordinance change includes the technical.
Can't hear you, sir.
I said, ordinance 213 changes the technical content of the Elton zoning ordinance and the map. As, as, well, it'll have to be amended to reflect that, that change because it wasn't on the map when I was working on today. This is presented for introduction only tonight. And I would ask the board to accept that as it's been amended. 32390.
That's for the zoning map. Okay, do I have?
The zoning map and the ordinance.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to accept the ordinance for the zoning map and zoning ordinance for introduction purposes only?
Sir, so move, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
This is with the, with the corrections that you just mentioned?
Yes.
2398 acres, C2 to R3.
Okay.
Okay, and a motion of second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The ordinance nine, 2013, is the subdivision regulation. But presented for introduction tonight. There's no changes that were incurred following the initial review by staff and the planning commission. So I would present ordinance nine, the subdivision regulations, for introduction also.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept ordinance nine, for introduction purposes only?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's it?
Old business. I don't have any old business, Mr. Joe, anything?
Yeah.
Sure, anything?
Just want to say I spent some time down in Meadow Park dealing with the parking at the entrance. And I had a couple of police officers that were assisting me doing time for football. And it really started getting bad out there. It took a couple of days to get people to start parking on the right to allow the walkers to be able to walk because cars were parking on both sides, left and right of the pathway. And noticing that it's not even enough room for an emergency vehicle to get through, we just want to ask the citizens or tree, the police, when you add to the park, try to park on the right side of the, if not using the parking spaces, the right side of the parking track to allow pedestrians to be able to walk freely without any injury due to vehicles. That's one of the things.
Good. Great point, yeah. Very good.
Charlie, anything?
I have nothing.
Get any old business, no? New business for one thing. Louis, just emailed, you've got regards to the golf course. Is that what you got back today? That they said they looked it up on the charter and that they can issue a permit? Are we getting close to that, can they still salvage that?
They're talking about the foreign partner's assessment of taxation. That the company Metal Play Management, LLC, it is legitimate. Legitimate, running, under the label of the company. Versus the, the other company was not registered as a foreign company in business now, but Metal Play is.
So we can still?
No, they could use Metal Play as a recipient of the permit if you made some application under that name.
Then we can save it.
But he hasn't yet, because they don't have a clear title on him.
Oh, okay. All right. And the other thing that I would, this past Sunday, I graduated, a little late graduating, but no, I graduated from the University of Maryland College Park in the fellowship, the fellow that the MML has on that requires us to go through some courses. And of course, a couple of years, you go through these courses and you get the credits for them, and then you graduate. Well, I had got the Academy of Excellence in the local government and myself and some, a lot of the other local officials were there Sunday. It was a very nice affair, and we all got our graduation certificates. So that makes, I think, myself and Commissioner Hicks has one as well. So that was very nice. And it was very, very interesting, and it's good courses and it teaches you a lot. So the only other thing is Thursday, September 26th, 3 to 5, got an invitation for the Cecil Technology Campus for the highlighting, our grant opening and ribbon cutting. So if anyone would like to go, it'll be September 26th at 3 to 5 at the Cecil Technology Campus. Okay? Okay, other than that, Larry Joe, anything?
October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the county's going pink again. So everyone has the courage to put pink, where I'm getting pink light covers, so we could cover lights and pink ribbons and just support the county. They did a great job last year with it, and we're going to do it again this year.
You know, I'm going to bring this up again to the board. And I'm not quite sure whether it falls under old business or new business, but my question again is, is the board going to take action on some type of economic plan for a downtown area?
So what kind of action are you seeking or specifically? What are you seeking or specifically, what do you want from us?
Well, I'm looking.
What is the agenda?
I'm looking to specifically maybe, you know, schedule a workshop to delve into what direction that the town needs to go and to make some changes downtown. what direction that the town needs to go in to make some changes downtown to help the different business owners downtown to, to, to get that business thriving.
So if we have an entity in place now, what is that we need to do? Replace the entity or come up with a whole?
Well, according, according to the presentation that I think we were all present at, the entity said that they didn't have a economic development plan for the businesses in downtown. Am I correct in saying that?
We heard that.
Okay. So a, as a matter to, to do something different and, and add to, you know, some type of growth downtown, I think we need to address that as a board.
Mr. Hicks, just for some information, I went down Monday, took a day off to visit some of the merchants down there and asked them specifically what is it that we could do to help? Number one, it would start with the business owners downtown to find out what we could do to help. We can't sit here and make decisions for them without knowing what their needs are. That was one. So get down and visit some of the merchants and talk to them personally and then we have a list to deal with when we come to whatever workshop or session we have.
So, I mean, so what are you suggesting?
Suggesting the merchants down there.
The board go down or you talking about myself?
We're part of the town, no, the people on the board.
Okay.
Okay, that's one start. Find out from the people that are down here struggling or whatever they're doing down there and find out what their needs are and then we have something to start with at the board.
And, and I understand that, not, you know, I'm not trying to get into a debate with you. That's definitely a piece of the, the puzzle, the plan, but the other piece is the actual, try to attract different businesses to the vacant buildings there. Mayor, do you have any comment on it?
Well, I think what you said, we can do that. I think the board goes down, talks to the merchants and then we may want to come back and then we can, as a board, we can talk along with the Alliance and some of their people there, put our heads together and see what we can come up with.
I don't think Mr. Hicks is talking about the existing businesses. They are already there. And I'm not, and I'm trying to read his mind. I guess he's talking about the absence of what's not there, trying to bring something in a, in a space that's, that's been voided. Is that what you're saying, sir?
The vacant buildings, the vacant properties that we have downtown, trying to come up with a plan to fill them with viable businesses for a downtown area.
He's already paying the Alliance to do that. What's going on there?
All right, Mary Jo, I think we could give with...
I had stated to Commissioner Hicks in the workshop that there's a lot of things we can do to, for business. We try our best to get business in town. What we don't have is low interest loan programs. We don't have incentives downtown. Route forty is your traffic. That's where the traffic count is. We have every franchise there is on Route forty. To get someone not to go to forty and come downtown, we as a town have to do that. Or the Alliance cannot do that. We cannot offer those incentives that the town of Elton can, can offer. And until we put something in place like that that other towns do downtown, no matter, you know, we've got to do something to get, we're not waterfront like Chesapeake City. We're not one road in like Northeast. You look down Route forty from Elton to Perryville, Elton has everything on Route forty. We have every franchise there is, every restaurant. Those towns don't have that on Route forty. We do. So we have, we're just like Cambridge, Maryland. On Route fifty, the same thing happened to them. When that got busy going into Ocean City, their downtown, they lost their downtown. So we as a town, not as the Alliance, will need to offer incentives to get people to say, don't go to forty where you're going to get traffic all day long. Come down here downtown because that's, you know, we need to do something to get them there.
Yeah, point, point well taken, Commissioner Jablonski. That's, that, that's exactly what I think further discussion needs to happen from the board.
And that's what I stated at the last meeting we had, is to get that workshop together.
Yeah, I don't recall that, but I think we do need to move forward on some type of plan.
Now we can designate our next workshop on, on that.
Okay.
Okay? What she want to come up with?
And then I would like to invite someone that I've been discussing for a few months, but no one heard about, a program that Haverdy Grace has with the low interest loan or incentives to their downtown. And that person that chairs that program is right here, working downtown.
Okay, we'll have him come.
Okay.
How we every time have a discuss it, the next workshop is always for what we addressing? Is there something else on the agenda prior to this? Or does this take precedence over what might already be existing? Most?
Depends on the topic and then it goes to Mayor for final approval.
The question is, I don't know what's on the agenda for October ninth.
I don't have any yet. This is it. That'd be number one.
I, I, I understand. So, so what are other towns doing now? Aberdeen, and, and I won't go on as much. I know they have an economic development program there that's, the town council's involved in or whatever. And some places have the Alliance.
I brought you budgets from other towns for everyone to look at in the past few years. They're taking about three hundred thousand dollars and putting it into economic development. What the Alliance does with fifty thousand dollars is all the marketing, all the brochures, all the advertising, we do all of that. That the town, the town has no budget for any, anything else, whether it's tourism, marketing, advertising, that's all under economic development. So if, I think that's something that needs to be brought up again as far as does the town want to put something in the budget? Can they afford it to do that?
I think the question is, can we, can we afford to continue doing the same thing and expect a different result while our downtown area becomes more and more vacant?
Commissioner Hicks, I would love to take you for a walk downtown, and I think I've said this before, and talk to some of the properties and owners. Because I had a merchants committee meeting two weeks ago and the biggest thing was who they don't see in their businesses and do they, do they even know we're here? And believe it or not, it means a lot.
Well, like I said, we'll get, get together and have a workshop on it and get some plans put together and, you know, get our heads together and see what we can come up with. Because we can all talk about it and we can get some ideas and where we have to go to...
But essentially what she's saying to you is that you pay me for the, the Alliance, but you have no economic development program. That's what she's saying.
Right. Not sure we need to come up with something. That's right. Don't I buy over that then?
It's fine.
You, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Whitehead?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
Congratulations on your graduation. I'm the property owner, owner of three oh five Landing Lane and I have sent a couple of letters opposing the rezoning of my property. I won't go through informational letters because you all have received them, you all seen the informational letters. I would like to make one more point that I was told by DMS that, that my property value will increase if I zone commercial. I'd like to point out that there's two prime properties currently on Landing Lane that have been empty for more than a decade. The old George's Restaurant and the old Texaco Station right down the street from my house. I would propose that I will not be able to sell my house at any time in the near future and I will not have any value in my home because of the rezoning of commercial. And the other information I sent you in the letters, please do not rezon my property.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rebecca? Whitehead? Do you want anything?
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon. I'm just seeing all again. Well, as my husband was saying and, and we've said before, we actually was not aware of this meeting tonight until last night. So I'm not prepared at all. But I will re, reiterate what he said and I hate to say it, but we still strongly press it. It still is going to impact us negatively. And we hope that everybody can be swayed. Look at the citizens, you know, the only reason this is not a spot that we is simply because that company purchased a house next door. You know, and unfortunately, we sit in the middle and yes, I guess we are an island. But although it is great for the county, it is detrimental to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, please.
How you doing?
My name's Andrew Whitehead. I'm the son of Rebecca and Andrew Whitehead. I'm opposed to the rezoning and I'd like to make some comments on statements made in favor of the rezoning last week by the developers. They stated that someone would want to purchase my parents' property or all of the properties once they're commercial. They further stated that the properties will be worth more once everything is rezoned commercial. These statements are both assumptions and they give no fault to the time it will take for these statements, these assumptions to come to fruition. My parents will need to live in a house that is no longer their home that they purchased that will be forced to live with the increased threat to safety and security and the increase in traffic. And this brings me to the next statement I would like to comment on, which reads, landing lane will be used for local traffic only. This still is an assumption. People will enter and exit Wawa whichever way seems more convenient. If there are two cars backed up at the forty exit, I would not be surprised if the next driver takes the landing lane exit. And they further stated that they would regulate the traffic going through the landing lane exit and entrance. I just don't see how it's possible. They can possibly regulate the traffic of the trucks and deliveries, but they can't regulate the traffic of the everyday motors. And we know that that's going to be the vast majority of the traffic coming in and out of Wawa within ten feet of their kitchen window and across their entire property. And the last statement that I would like to comment on reads, we are asking to make the properties conforming. Now this touches on what my mother just spoke on. And this is just a short cited statement. If one were to only look at the zoning codes, then maybe this statement holds some truth. But the only commercial property that existed beside my parents' house was the small doctor's office until the developers came and bought and converted all the rest of the properties to commercial. And now the developer is asking to conform my parents' house. This seems like a classic case of the big guy picked on the little guy. On a more personal note, if God forbid my father becomes ill or gets laid off, my parents will not be able to afford their home. They will also likely not be able to sell their home. The developers of Wawa will have effectively backed my parents into a corner that they cannot financially afford to get out of. In my mind, knowingly putting any person through distress and hardships that my parents could face is immoral. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Before Bob comes, certainly I know we haven't voted yet and I was by your home yesterday and I was by your home last night and there certainly would be some issues if there is a change.
Just a couple of questions. Bob, listen, we're one of five, one of the leaders. Your more property, what is the zoning on either side of that? It's commercial, highway commercial, I know that. Was it C one, C two or what?
C two.
C two on both sides of that property. I guess my question is, you have a planning commission, there are volunteers that work for you and they recommend to change the zoning to C two. And what the paper says in there, you people don't want to do that, you want to change the ordinance. Is that correct?
No, we just changed it to C two. C two, he had B, BI, his business, but we changed to C two.
You did change it to C two. Maybe I misread this. I hope you did.
It was BI, correct?
It was Business Industrial.
Business Industrial, we changed to C two.
You did change it to C two. Right. Because I was going to point out, if you go to Newark, South Main Street and see what they do with the commercial on the, on the first floor, apartments on the second, it's a good looking job.
Yeah, it can be.
Now, things outside, and Bruce, I'm not going one way or the other about your project, but my question is, how many units are you going to be building out there with an R three if you change from R one to R two, everything to C three? How many, how's that going to impact the, the treatment plant, the water and treatment plant? How's that going to impact that? I mean, you're, you're buying water now from Artesian, what happens then? Can you utilize that well that's there?
There's a well out, there's a well out there we can utilize.
That's what I'm saying. These are things you gotta address. But how many, how many units are they going to be able to build with the R three zoning?
Well, he's still going with the PUD, you know, project. This was just as a, a backup plan if something was to go wrong with the PUD, but he's...
Well, he came in here two weeks ago or a month ago and they were talking about changing all the zoning to R three. I sat right here and heard it. It wasn't the PUD, it was changing R three. Am I correct, Bruce? You're incorrect, okay? But that's, that's some of the questions I think you have to address. That's another thing, there's a storage unit on one oh two, Gulp Avenue, Louis? That was asked about three months ago. They don't have a permit for it, didn't then, but it's still there. How long are you allowed to have these, these pods on a property?
I don't know, it's on private property.
It's on private property.
I don't know.
It's in a driveway.
I don't know how long.
My neighborhood...
We would say they need a permit to have it on public property, but not private property.
My neighborhood's beginning to get down too quickly. We got rid of one situation up there and now we got another one right behind me and now it's just beginning to be a pig thing. And I think if somebody can address that, a building inspector, to see how long they can leave that pod there in the front yard?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bruce, did you, want to say anything?
No, just reiterating what we said before, that we have no intention of going away from the PUD. We're going forward with it. Nationally, we're going forward.
Okay. Okay. If there ain't nothing else. All right, Joe, you got anything?
I'd like to call a closed meeting to discuss personnel.
Do I have a motion for a closed meeting?
Some move.
Motion, a second. All those in favor? Motion carried, we will not be reconvening.